So you know, yeah, you know that for a long time. My son would say. And they would enjoy it every day.
What do you all think?
Yeah.
I'm gonna make it. Say your question. Can I win, man?
Not that I am aware of. Kind of been an issue. Mike, maybe we need some solar power.
There are supplies back there that might help, but I don't want to turn on.
We're gonna call this meeting to order. Thanks everyone for coming. Mr. Fisher back there in the back especially. We have a quorum. We're missing one person, Francois, at this time. Maybe they didn't get the word where we were gonna have the meeting. First thing on the agenda is to adopt the minutes of the January twentieth meeting. I think everybody, I sent a copy to everybody. Is there any comments, corrections, thoughts, whatever on those? If not, can I get a motion to approve? All in favor, say aye. Thank you, Nan. Next thing on the agenda is Mr. Brian Gordon, Emergency Communications Director. I'm talking about the cell tower up on Hoover Ridge. Mr. Gordon?
Yes, sir. Basically just gonna come in front of everybody and kind of give a heads up where we are and what this tower's gonna do. May or may not be aware, we're standing on a P twenty-five radio system. That's just a federal standard to help us get where we need to be. Right now, we're right around sixty percent coverage. This tower gets us closer to ninety-five. Obviously with the peaks and valleys in the county, you're never gonna achieve a hundred percent unless you spend a bunch of money. So this tower here at Hoover Ridge is gonna be a part of that. It's a four-tower system. We're proposing it a hundred and ninety-five feet with microwave pass back to beautiful Ron and Blakey Ridge. Everybody here be okay?
I hope so.
So basically, I'm gonna get in front of you guys now and answer any questions that you might have. I've got some documentation here about how we got here and that type of thing. So we got fifty by fifty foot compound at Hoover Ridge with a one ninety-five foot tower. We've got it all backed away from everything because we can, as far as the major trails and crockett, the baseball field, that type of thing. It's back in the woodwork, trying to have a minimal effect. We're building it to hold six more cell phone batteries if we need to, which will bring revenue. Now, obviously, we've gotta have batteries that won't be on it, but the opportunity will be there.
What is the useful range of antenna?
The antennas are, they're VHF antennas, so the range is pretty good through structure. When I say structure, I mean flying. That tower there, if nothing else was hooked to the tower, you could probably get ten or twelve miles out of them. With the silent cast system, you gotta have a range of up to seventy miles. So right now, if we look at unbounded coverage with this system, we're getting spotty coverage into Richmond and Florida. The masses. So it's, we're working in unison and that's kind of where we get our range from. Right now, it's kind of work solely off of this ladder of Hoover Ridge. And I can talk in Staffordville places. But if you hardly use it, it's a matter of time.
Is this gonna be the only tower?
No.
It's gonna be four.
There's gonna be four total. Two in Maraville, the one in beautiful Ron down on Mr. Ross's property.
Correct.
Where you're utilizing that one. Also, the one in Blakey Ridge, the R E C, currently. We're gonna utilize that. So we're building this one and we're in talks with V O F and two landowners off of the River Rose to build the four. And we're, part of that is under V O F, which is why we're a little bit delayed in getting that part of it used by everybody at the same time.
So this tower will be built by the county, Brian, and home of the county?
Yes, sir. We're contractors Motorola, they're subbing out the house and stuff.
So is the tower back towards the upper end of Hoover Ridge or back toward the lower end toward town?
You know where Jerry had the mold piles?
Yes, sir.
Okay, right there is where the entrance is gonna be, is approximately a hundred yards beyond those mold piles. That's right there. There's a huge dead white oak tree. Pretty much use that for a land.
And how high is it? You may have said that.
It's a hundred and ninety-five foot self-support structure with a four-foot lighting rod. It's a total height of one ninety-five.
And the one up in front of the ground is one out?
Well, that one is a couple different properties. The biggest one is a hundred foot below grade of what Hoover Ridge site is. One of the microwave dishes in this tower is gonna have to be right at a hundred and eighty-five feet. So if you look at that and assume it was the same angle at that location, you're looking at a two hundred and eighty-five foot tower. We would have to extend that tower right down to a hundred and eighty. So if we could extend it to that height, we would have to light it. And I think that's something that I've been getting, hearing people don't wanna see much of red light flashing. I agree with you. So we keep everything on a hundred and ninety-nine. And from a monetary perspective, it's gonna help the county bring in revenue potentially. And we're not gonna have to pay rent to somebody.
Oh, good. Any other questions?
Are there grants for this or is this just all county funds?
This is gonna be county funds here. We are trying to get grants for subscriber units on the backside. Right now, we currently got a grant of already five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And I'm trying to get several more grants to cover our rate. Unfortunately, federal and state grants don't cover infrastructure on the public safety side of it. But that doesn't mean to start at the top, I'm steadily, especially with the Cares Act and all this stuff, I was hoping to still go. I'm still doing.
Yes, sir. If you have revenue with that.
If somebody chooses to be on the tower, absolutely, yes, sir. And going right for that, while we're paying twenty-two hundred dollars a month, you're wrong. It's to pay for that, be on that site. So for commercial break, if somebody wants to get on it, we can certainly charge that rate or even more than we already.
And how many antennae can this accommodate?
It can hold what we hold plus six more sites. So if A T and T, T-Mobile, Verizon, all those folks want to come in, we can hold up to six more. Or C T uses it.
Are you marketing to those?
I've already started talking to A T and T on their first net site to see if we can get those folks on there. And I have that interest in a potential meeting, but that's a very, very big organization as far as to know that name. But I don't want to make the folks off of my contacts. We're talking about thousand M T's represented. And also part of this, we've sent letters out to all the carriers as well when the application was filed, so that they're all being made aware of. Eventually, that tower at the farmer's ground is becoming very much overloaded. If you look at the top of it, it's got stuff all over it and there's no room for anything else. Sooner or later, with the technology of the race of five gene and things of that nature, you're gonna have to have it out of me to its multiple places.
Is your office the proper authority to be marketing this or should it be economic development or something else drives the market?
I mean, that's something, certainly it'd be up the conversation. We really have not gotten to that point yet, other than you made a few unofficial contacts to see who'd be in it. But at some point, when we start actually marketing that, yeah, we should, we should allocate some, some of that.
Any other questions from the planning commission? Any members of the audience would care to comment or ask a question? Mr. Fisher in the back?
Yes, Brian?
Yes, sir.
What's the, so you have four sites for these antennas across the county?
Yes, sir.
Is this just your first step? I mean, you gotta go to a public hearing?
We'll have to go to a public hearing for the, for the two new towers, the Hoover Ridge site and the Hughes River site. The other two are established sites. We're just having to put our foot on it. One, actually, we're already there. We're just upgrading what was already on it.
Well, I'm just, I'm just worried about lawsuits. I mean, that seems crazy. Okay, so you gotta go to a public hearing and that's it?
We are doing everything anybody else would have to do.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Good question, Mr. Fisher. Anyone else? Thank you very much, Brian. Appreciate you filling us in on that.
Absolutely.
Next item on the agenda is the subdivision flat presented by Travis and Sarah Harris. It seems like they have health department indeed out approval. So it seems like it's pretty much on track. Anything else you wanna add?
No, it's all there. So I didn't really have a lot to say back. It's all, all in order and we'll, I guess, I'll put it in the paper, so it'll be at a hearing. We'll have the, you know, the joint meeting in April to give it official blessing, but otherwise, everything's in order.
How do you determine, how do you find out that it has been subdivided in this section?
Yeah, that's a good question. So lady kept meticulous records of the subdivision. So she actually has books that if there was a subdivision, at least for like, she runs. That's the first thing I go to, is to look at that. And then you can actually look at the, sometimes at the tax map number, if it's a B or D, will tell you if it's been subdivided. Not always. And then today, Brian, Commissioner, Brian Daniel actually get Brian Gordon, Brian Daniel, we're gonna get them mixed up. Brian, Daniel showed me the property card information that they use to determine, you know, divisions. And that helps as well. So we just basically do a little title search, I guess you could say, and just see in that particular one, if there had been a division, so.
Well, is the applicant here? Okay. I have, looking on the county G I S website, it shows the owner of that property is William and Hevlin Burke out of Oxford, North Carolina, on the G I S website for that tax map number. Is that something?
Yeah, actually, the Harris has closed on it in December. And I have that D. I do have a copy of that. So that was, usually it probably takes about three months for sometimes the G I S to update the ownership, so. They are the rightful owners, so that's a
Okay. I'm gonna make sure.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the planning commission?
Just one. Do you have any understanding as to whether the applicant plans to subdivide the individual?
No, they do not. I guess in theory, they could do one more in the next ten years, but I just think it's a situation where, you know, they're just trying to recoup some of their investment in the, in the land by selling a couple lots. Since it hasn't been divided, it still has the potential to create more new lots. But my understanding is this is out, will stay quite a while.
Anybody else? Anyone from the audience, comment, question? If not, moving on. Thank you, Mr. Webb. The next item on the agenda, Mr. Cardi Yow has some comments and updates on the broadband task force.
Okay, so at the board of supervisors meeting last Tuesday, a week ago, I made a plea, or the entire board actually made a plea to the public for information and opinions on whether the board of supervisors should pursue broadband authority, a true authority, which for those who might not know, would encompass incorporation, articles of incorporation, bylaws, S C C, certificate, all that kind of stuff. So I, I think everybody had the write-up. The broadband task force made a presentation to the board supervisors. And that was in your packet. I hope you have read that because what I wanna find out from you all is, after I left that meeting that night, I thought, okay, try to get input from the public, but I should get input, or the board should get input from the planning commission as well. So what I wanna hear from you guys is your opinions based on the information that was in the packet, on whether you think that formation of a true authority is the way to go. Or there are pros and cons, and most of them are in that packet, I think. And whether, or whether the broadband task force would be sufficient to ultimately bring broadband to Madison citizens. So I'm here to hear your thoughts on that.
Well, as you would probably imagine, I have an opinion.
Yeah. Well, that's good, Pete. What you got, man? Let me, can I write fast enough to keep up with this?
Well, I, I, I can say what I think, and again, it's an opinion.
Yeah.
I wanna see every kid at this county have the opportunity, if they have to get an education through broadband, to have broadband. I think it is very, very important to the county, for the kids in this county to have broadband, even the citizens in this county to have broadband. The one thing that concerns me is, I think if we could, if we could partner with someone, makes me feel a lot better than broadband authority. And I attended this meeting, and here's a concern I have with the broadband authority. We vote for the five supervisors to represent us. If we appoint a broadband authority, they have all the voting power, not the supervisors. The supervisors could be a member of it, but at the same time, if all five of them are not members of it, they don't truly have the voting power. The other thing that concerns me somewhat is if we get grants to get this started, and we have the grants to get it started, what could happen when there's no more grants out there? We're out of money and we need to keep this thing going because we've got it started. Or is this, would this authority have to come to the board and say, hey, you gotta put taxpayer money in now if you don't have any money? And that would worry me, putting taxpayer money in with authority that's voting without the power of the supervisors. The other thing that concerns me a little bit with it is Madison County is an aging county. And at some point in time, the reason we don't have cell towers everywhere now is not enough support for people to get on those cell towers to support the cell towers. So if our community is aging out and the people, you know, that just don't really care about broadband, and they're not paying the eighty or ninety dollars a month that you would have to be to be on here, do we have an aging population? To be, for his to be able to do something. But in my opinion, I think it's safer for the county to partner with somebody versus broadband, uh, authority. And that's, that's my opinion, if what is for it.
Thank you. Yes, Peter?
Cardi, I would just respond to Pete. I think as the task force has envisioned the broadband authority, it would be part. It would be partnering possibly with other governmental units. Take, for example, Rabahannock County, which has just formed the broadband authority and has talked to us about possibly partnering with us. And partnering with both providers, such as R E C and I S Ps, of which there are many operating here, and there are six. Was it five, Mike?
I think there were six.
Six I S Ps that have applied for and received federal funds to develop broadband in this county. We would be partnering with them. So the partnership concept is not only a good idea, but it's an essential idea from the standpoint of those of us on the task force that have discussed this.
So have you all got the, the report that the task force presented to the board in front of you right now?
That's what you, that's what you had online.
Yeah, okay. All right, who else?
Well, it seems like when we left, at our last meeting, we were saying, it was that authority was not the right way to go. Because it had too much power, it should be a task force. So conversationally, I remember it. And so to see then that it flipped was a bit of a surprise.
Well, I thought that the planning commission recommended that the board of supervisors create an authority. There was a majority vote on that. And then the board, uh
Yeah, that's the way I read it, Mike.
We didn't, we know?
The December fourteenth write-up from the planning commission indicated that the planning commission wanted the board to consider forming an authority.
And we recommended that.
But then when we were told what the difference between a task force and an authority was, it's the, I, I in terms of, I mean, first one, a task force.
Okay, well, that's exactly why I'm standing here, yeah.
If I voted for authority, I'd get in the gym, dude.
That's me.
Yeah, okay.
I definitely voted to do something, create some supplement.
I recall that the planning commission recommended to the board of supervisors, it was not unanimous, but there was a majority vote to create an authority. Right now, it doesn't matter which way it went, because we have two options before, so it really doesn't matter at this point.
But I mean, they were, just to clarify, I don't know why, I explained it to, when he explained it, that clarified for me what authority could do and not do. And that vote would not have taken, of course, it were, I think it was a semantic thing back there.
So you think we should not?
Well, the question would be, what can you do, what can you not do that you're gonna need to do if you're just a task force? What do you need to do to get this going and to have this, you know, move forwards as a task force versus an authority? The other question beyond that would be, if later on you see you need the authority, terminology, you know, or whatever, could that be established later? I mean, in other words, what can you do right now as a task force?
All right, so Sean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but regardless of whether we go with a task force or organized authority, there is no difference in the powers that could be instilled in either, well, I'll take that back. The board of supervisors would be controlling the task force and feel the powers that they see fit. The authority has those powers already spelled out.
And a lot of it is timing. Think is not necessarily an either or situation. What I mean by that, you can start with a task force, see what the task force can do, and if you ultimately determine that you need an authority, then you can establish the authority at that point. One of the concerns I have, if you read, and I actually gave out a memorandum a month, several weeks ago, you know, that talked about it, you know, an authority has far more power. An authority is essentially a vendor. You know, they would be actually selling the broadband to Madison County citizens. You may recall that we had one investor who does this stuff, who said he would not let us see Madison County go down that route. There are some limitations in terms of, I'll finish, Peter, and then I'll hear from him. What we will do is, you know, as you set this up, it just seems to me that an incremental approach probably makes more sense because the, the real question is what powers that an authority has would this board feel if needed? And if there are not at this stage, then an authority might be premature. On the other hand, if we are going to be the next A O L, you know, then we would do that. You know, and it would make sense to go the authority approach now. I'm sorry, I'm, yeah, I heard Mike.
That's all right.
You can't, you can't see it, but he's got a hand up, so.
I'll read the motion that was adopted on January sixth. I move that the planning commission recommend to the board of supervisors that it be established a formal Madison County broadband authority for the purposes of extending high-speed, affordable broadband and cell phone service throughout the county and taking advantage of financial and technical advisory sources that are available for this purpose. One or more members of the recommended authority should be a member of the board of supervisors. That motion passed. And then, Sean, we have addressed the point that you made, that the authority would be selling broadband services to the community. That is not the model, that is a possible model, but it is not the model that either the planning commission or the broadband task force comprised of D O S members and planning commission members has adopted. The concept is that the broadband authority would act as a catalyst, partner with providers like R E C and, and I S Ps of the kind of I S Ps that have been funded by the F C C. And they would be providing the service to the county, not the broadband authority.
But to be clear, we could do that as a task force without being an authority. I just, we, I just wanna make sure everybody understands that. Yep.
Hey, man, hey, man, Peter, are you finished?
Yeah.
Do you have something?
Uh, I had, well, I had two quick questions, just like
Okay.
Interference with that. Have you had discussions with the local broadband provider who was at that meeting and commented that he didn't want to see Madison going to authority?
Yeah, we, we have had him in
Yeah.
On the task force committee meetings, broad data, yeah.
And what is his take on that? I mean, obviously, he's a businessman, he's trying to
Yeah, he doesn't care one way or the other, as long as he ends up being a partner somewhere along the line, I think. But he did supply us with some good data that we need.
And as a business, he wants to be involved, but not without
I would say so. Mike, Peter, don't, I mean, Clint would certainly like to be, you know, a partner down the road. You know, he is an I S P, so.
Uh, second question. Have you had any further information from R E C? Or are they still in their client period because of the lawsuit?
Hey, man.
Yeah, I, I spoke with the manager of information technology at R E C within the past week, following the board of supervisors meeting. Because of the lawsuit, they have all their strategy, but they are very much involved in broadband. For example, I don't know if any For example, I don't know if any of you saw the announcement with regard to Louisa County, where they are partnering with CenturyLink or FiberLink and Louisa County and RVC and Dominion. And they intend, per their announcement, they intend to bring broadband to every house and every business in Louisa County. And what this gentleman, his name is Mike C., told me was that because of the lawsuit, they have decided not to go it alone, but to enter into partnerships with a governing body, a county, and an ISP in the case of, say, by. They are also talking with Culpeper County, and there is a contract, and I'm not sure that there's been a partnership contract that's been formalized, but there is a contract between an ISP and Culpeper County, the ISP being a company called All Points Broadband. And the concept of that, again, would be that Dominion and RVC would both be involved.
So, to answer Steve's question, RVC is fully engaged?
Back in the game.
Megyn.
With those two things said, my comment would be, kind of along the same lines of what Peter just said, I'm not sure I want to see the county involved in the business, but partnering, yes, that's obviously a, clearly not setting up an authority to become the business.
Francois?
Yeah, I have several bullet points.
Could you pull the mic down a little bit, please?
Yeah. Can you hear me? Yes. One question for me is whether the task force would have the authority, the legal authority to enter into contracts with partners, which is what is needed to be done if we are going to partner. Second point, many of the surrounding counties have an authority, and if they, if they want to become vendors, they then have a subsidiary, like in Orange. And one of the counties, Rappahannock, had a task force and decided to now have an authority. So, that's another point. But to, more of a philosophical viewpoint about the responsibilities of the county, it seems to me that we can't think about. Obviously, somebody that.
I'm gonna ask you, go ahead.
I tried to just. Um, the county, I believe, should not be in the business of being a vendor. If it isn't a vendor, then it has to worry about revenues. Instead, the county, I believe, needs to ensure that fiber is brought to every single home. It's like electricity, it's just a utility. So, we need to make sure that fiber is every single home in Madison County. And then, the commercial aspect of, of the enterprise can be getting there outside by someone else. But in terms of what I believe the task force or authority has to do and has the power to do is to ensure that fiber is brought to every single home.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Krieger had a question earlier, we'll answer.
Dan.
All right. In looking, in, Peter, correct, in January, we made that, the motion was made about presenting this to the Board of Supervisors, that we need to do something, and Peter made the motion, and I seconded, so I remember that. But then, what I was thinking, I was surprised, from our workshop meeting, when Sean was, he gave us that handout and talked about the difference between an authority and a task force, my opinion was that it was leaning towards a task force. But as long as we did it, I don't care. We're moving forward.
Can I ask you a question, Sean? If we wanted to make a, I get the feeling that a lot of people on the planning commission thought we were creating a task force and not a broadband, and I also get the impression that a lot of people didn't know what the power of authority would be. And is it possible to make a motion to change what we did to say that we want to create a task force and not a authority?
Not in this workshop, but.
It's not necessary, Pete. That, oh, go ahead, Sean.
And remember, recommendations from the planning commission are not binding on the planning.
Right, that issue is in front of the Board of Supervisors, so, and in order to do this, there will have to be a resolution to do it and a public hearing. So, that's, that's why, if you all would write down the report that was presented to the Board of Supervisors, I want y'all to pay particular attention to page six, just write down page six. And the makeup of an authority can have five to seven, and I'd just like to let you know that of the three counties with authorities, that's Albemarle, Orange, and Rappahannock. Rappahannock has an authority membership of five, and all five are Board of Supervisors. Orange has seven, and four of the seven are supervisors. Albemarle has a membership of seven, and only two Board of Supervisors are on there. The others just have.
Louisa also has broadband authority.
Yeah. So, obviously, the pros and cons of that, like Rappahannock, you know, they put all their Board of Supervisors on the authority. I can tell you right now, I don't think I have the bandwidth nor the expertise to, to be effective. So, that's an issue in my mind, if you want to, but if you wanted to have the authority, you know, if you had seven, if you had four of the board members on there, you know, you've got a four to three vote on something they don't like, but whatever. I'm just, if y'all would look at that stuff, I'll take, or any of us, Peter, Francois, Mike, myself, and Kevin McGee are on the task force. Send us your thoughts. Like I say, if we went the authority route, there will be a public hearing, so.
Just one more point, sorry, response, Pete. Proceeding our meeting, what was it, on January 6th, I forget, but we did, Francois and I did prepare a memo circulated on December 14th, which described what a broadband authority was, and that was the basis for discussion at our meeting in January where the motion was passed.
Yep.
The only comment I have, since everything else has already been beat up pretty good, is that based on the research that was done by the planning commission committee, that we found that the counties that had formed an authority were being more effective with getting broadband to the community, and some of them just had kind of informal type committees or so forth. That was the plus for a task force. I understand why the county might be reluctant to do that, but those were our findings at that time.
One, follow up on Mike. The most recent broadband authority establishment was in Rappahannock County. Proceeding that for, what, four years, Mike?
Yeah.
Four or five years, they had a broadband committee, which was much less formal than a broadband authority. And they changed to a broadband authority because the broadband committee didn't get anything done, just like the broadband committee in Madison County that was formed in 2016, was stymied and didn't get it.
Okay, anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, if I could, you know, and it could be you wanted to have an authority, and that may be what supervisory does, I don't know, but it seems to me that there are lots of questions that probably need to be answered. I had a conversation with the Orange County Attorney last week about this issue, and one of the first things they did is an inventory of how much fiber they actually have. By serendipity, for lack of a better term, they discover that there is a huge fiber front line from Ashburn, Virginia, that runs somewhere along the course of week 522. The significance of that was, Orange County found out it had a lot more fiber in the ground than it thought. And they were very fortunate that they were able to catch some of these things while the trenches were still open, and they were able to add additional, you know, fiber optic or whatever those cables are called, in order to be able to do it. It seems to me that if nothing else, you know, a task force can find out, what do we have in the ground here? I mean, does anybody know? You don't need an authority to do that. Related to it is, who owns the fiber? Is it owned by a public utility? Is it owned by someone else? If it's owned by someone else, do we have any means to access it? Somewhat related is, and I think I know the answer, a lot of Z-Dot roads are prescribed easements, as most of y'all know, meaning that there are no actual easements other than for the road. They would probably, I don't know this because I haven't searched it, but they would probably have to exercise their right to benefit their main to run some of this, you know, part of people's houses. And that's a question that needs to be answered. It seems that the prevailing tides are to allow that, but sitting here, I don't think that that question formally is answered. I know that lawsuit is still pending in Culpeper County, I haven't heard of any resolution on that. And then, the other part of it is, not everybody is in favor of it. You know, there are landowners who will oppose it. And one of the things that I think is important to do is have a task force, get a sense of those things, identify who the partners might be, and then get those answers. I think without having those answers, it seems to me that an authority is going to have to confront those issues anyway. It seems to me to get those answers, you know, is probably the first step, you know, and hopefully, you know, there's, you know, some money devoted, you know, allocated to come up with a study as to where all of these things that exist at the Board of Supervisors level for the vision, direct whatever money you need to have.
I agree with what you're saying, and I saw all your questions and comments, and it seems to me that we first need to figure out which way, direction we're going in here, a task force or an authority, and get some kind of plan, and then they can do the research and get the questions answered that you asked, but they were all good questions. But first, we've got to figure out who's going to do that. Steve?
Yeah, assuming, and Francois said, that this is a non-vender type of broadband authority. Have you, as the task force proceeded to the point of envisioning what kind of partnership and how they would operate with the broadband authority?
No, I don't, we have not, no.
Haven't gotten it.
Right.
Anybody else?
There is, one of the folks noted, Mike, there's a lot of cables drawn through the county now in the air, because the road I live on, that whole road has cable. I mean, there are roads everywhere that's got cables drawn along, but everybody on my road has, through Barack.
Francois?
Well, I think partial access to these questions is that there is a bit of a roadmap as to for the partnership. Obviously, we need to consider RAC as well as all these people who, oh, not people, but entities, who got funding through the, through the, through the, in, so that's the key to the roadmap. But nobody has.
No, no formal idea of how.
Cardi?
One quick comment. Not too long ago, when we were looking at a special use permit for a, I forget what they call it, but it's, the cables have to have a, like a repeater station, so often. That particular fiber optic cable was private, and it went through Madison, and we had to give it the location to put the repeater station, but it was not accessible to Madison from point A to point B. And we don't, you know, there's cables like that up at downtown.
Okay. Cardi, does that answer your questions?
Oh, I'm, I'm not the only one answering questions. I got one thing. So, I don't keep up with technology like I probably should, but we use internet just from like cellphone signal at my house, and my daughter does her schoolwork on it. We stream TV. Is it possible that broadband, fiber and stuff is just kind of on its way out and the cell phone? Wireless, that wireless can solve a whole lot of problems at once?
Somebody was having a conversation yesterday. We're, he and I were having a conversation, somebody was having a conversation.
You know, I mean, I know it's been a talk in town for a long time. By the time we do it, they might be on 8G by then.
Yeah, fiber optic is still considerably faster.
Considerably faster, but I mean, my daughter has no problem doing schoolwork.
Yeah, I mean, it's workable.
And it's getting, you know, that technology is getting better.
Can I, okay, but let me say one thing. Any suggestions or comments, you can send them to Cardi, but a lot of these questions would have to be answered by the task force or the authority, once they are established and do the research to get a good handle on all this. That necessarily has not been done at this time, so we can always comment and ask a lot of questions, but I don't think we're at that point right now.
I just have one question, a redeveloped question again, and that, of course, it's not personal interest in knowing about this. I haven't made my way down there yet. I will be in the next couple of weeks to find out from the school system, again, what, how that's working for me as emergency council, and, you know, what's going on with what they're doing, piggyback on what they've already found out. Do we know yet how all these students, or any of these students are using hotspots and whatever that they were given? Do we know the success of that? Do we know what problems they had? Do we know where the spots are that there's no service? What do we know that the school does? They have to go virtual this year.
I have talked to the superintendent of schools, and I talked to their IT specialist, and they've given me some information on that. I can't answer all your questions, but I have been in touch with them, and the task force has been in touch with them, so we are working with the school system. No, no, okay. All right.
Can I make one comment?
Mr. Fisher?
My problem with all this is, is a sense of urgency. And all of these other counties, if you read, like I have, and have talked to them, they were all, they've got money, and Mass County doesn't have it down, whether you have authority or task force or anything. They've got CARES Act money that they, in Orange, that's how they got, and we're sitting here month after month, and we can't make a decision on a task force or authority. Well, I can tell you, the citizens of Mass County, you know, don't have any cable. There's no cable down there. And we, we, I go, my kids go to Grimes, and I fight all the time, max satellite, so they can go virtual. Now, I don't know what Madison's done, I've talked to them, a lot of those kids, they're behind, I can tell you where they are. And what we, I think what we need, what I've read, in my opinion, I'm not sitting on that board of board, but we need a. but we need an authority because authority can make decisions, and the board supervisors just, I mean, they're all in with everything else. And I don't know if they're putting five board supervisors on authority. Then I think that's a stupid move. But on the other hand, I think we desperately need an authority, and we need something where we can get, put money into this and move on.
Thank you very much. One last question, one last comment. We've got to move on.
I, I share my view that as we sit here, we started this, the process in this county, as I said, in 2016. And come the next year, and our committee was defunct because it didn't have the support of the board of super partners. All the other counties that are neighboring Madison County, the ones that we've mentioned, also started up their programs in about 2016, 2017. And they have taken advantage of the fact that both the state and the federal government have funds available for broadband development, and we've just missed out on them. And we're going to miss out on 2021? And our best hope is to do something by 2022? A timers of the essence here. We can't just sit back and, you know, the task force should be authority. We have to ask. And one last point, John, I don't have all the answers to the questions you raised, but I have a lot of them, and I'd be happy to talk to you about them. The work, the person who is most knowledgeable about broadband services in this area, obviously, it's quite high at Madison, at Madison gigabyte. But Francois and I have talked to him at length, and we do have at least some answers to your questions. I understand, really not my questions, really, the questions really for Cardi's committee, if you may. You know, I was just bringing up the things that maybe the answers.
But you were the one who asked the questions, and I did happy to talk to you.
I don't care where the questions come from.
All right.
Now, that kind of hurts my feelings.
Okay, I think we beat that up enough. Let's move on to the next issue. Like I said, anybody that has any good positive comments, you can send them to Cardi or task force. It would be greatly appreciated because we are, with the county, is losing out on a lot of possible funds to improve broadband service in the county. Next item on the agenda, Mr. Webb has received a inquiry about a potential solar farm coming to Madison County out here on Route 10, Route 29 by the yogurt store.
Yes, sir.
All right. Mr. Webb?
So particular parcel, A1, is to the left and looking at the yogurt store. The 91 acres. I've been talking to James Beal, Gene are here. They live in Williamsburg. They own the property. You know, I, I think what I said in my email to everyone is, you know, whatever, regardless of the potential proposal, and I know that solar is a hot topic these days in a lot of places. I always encourage people, if they've got a proposal or want to do something, that, hey, come for the board. Day in court, I guess, literally today. Now, this particular, particular property, obviously, it needs a rezoning as well. So I think the applicants just want to get an idea of, you know, I guess, sort of the feedback from the planning commission. I've also suggested that, you know, we can also talk to the, to the board. Obviously, the planning commission recommends that, you know, our next joint meeting, they're welcome to also sort of get some feedback from the board supervisors in the joint meeting as well. Having said that, they're working through, I guess, Mr. Heer, Dan, that I, he wrote the letter, Dan, Band. He is here, and he, he actually, the letters you can see to, to myself and the planning commission talking about the project. I will sort of turn it over to them. You can read, you know, obviously, if you've read some of the information that Mr. Band put in the, provided to me that you, that are in the packets regarding solar. I guess the big thing, from what I understand, is that the state now basically allows the localities to profit share, enjoy some of the profits potentially from a solar, a solar farm. Living over in Page, we, they've gone through this the last several months, and it has been, I try not to pay a lot of attention to it. People try to drag me into it, but, I mean, my, my personal opinion as a citizen is, I, I'm not against a solar farm. You know, I, I think what most, what most folks see is, you know, as I said, sort of like cell towers, it's usually the criticism is, is visual, what, what it looks like. I, I don't, some have tried to argue, at least in Page, that they're toxic. I, I don't quite know if I understand why they would be toxic, but I would say no more than a chicken house is. But, so personally, you know, as a citizen, I'm open minded to it. I think there could be places where it would be appropriate. I know that the solar has to be somewhat toxic to a transmission station, which this is. I just think in this process, whereas maybe in other counties, it seems like they really have gone back and forth. In Page, they're trying to make it by right in certain places and this and that. I'd just rather you just be direct with applicants and just say, look, this is something that, you know, we give you your, you know, if you move forward with a special, with a rezoning, and in this case, then a special use, we would, we'll give you your, your day in court and give you a hearing. Or it could just, again, just be one of these situations where that's why we talk about things beforehand. If, if it's obviously something, I mean, it's, it's a rezoning, it's a pretty significant piece of land here. Right off 29, it's very visible beside one of the, you know, probably one of the more well-known landmarks in the county. So that's why, you know, through my conversations the last few months, that's why I invited him here, just to give some initial and get some feedback from you folks. Having said that, I'll step back. I don't know, Mr. Band wants to talk first, whoever from them wants to talk, a good question for me, but otherwise, I'll just, I'll just sit back and listen.
Okay, Mr. Band? First off, I would like to say that we have read your flyer on your company and what you do and stand for. But please proceed.
Great. So my name is Daniel Band. I'm with Luth Callon Renewables. I'm here with the landowners, the Beals, and the Weepers. We're just here to, you know, get some feedback from you guys on the potential rezoning. We're not asking the commission to make any decisions tonight, but essentially to talk through this project and, you know, see what kind of feedback we get. So I also made a PowerPoint. We're going to go a little low-tech tonight, but I'm happy to talk through it. I just wanted to introduce our company to you and then talk through the property, essentially. So as I said, I'm with Luth Callon Renewables. We're based in Connecticut. I'm actually based in North Carolina, so I work on our Virginia projects. We do a variety of projects, so it's rooftop, carport, ground mount. In this case, this is a ground mount project. Moving on to the subject property, so as Mr. Webb said, this is off of Seminole Trail. It's 91 acres. It's very close to good utility lines. That's something that's pretty important to us when we look for proper, for properties. And it's relatively flat. You know, we, we can't do anything on mountainsides, obviously, but this, this property, all things considered, from a topographic and environmental perspective, is really great for solar. Zone A1 and B1, so it's B1 near the road, and then A1 off the road. So this would be looking for a rezoning. And that would be, to my understanding, to M1 zoning. So just jumping into some of the benefits that the county could see as part of this project. The Virginia Clean Economy Act was passed last July. I was part of that bill and some other subsequent bills in relation to it. The, the state allowed counties to come in and essentially pass laws that said, you know, for every project, you can charge them a set amount per megawatt produced. So for example, if this is a 25-megawatt project, which in the scheme of things is a relatively smaller project in Virginia, you could be looking at tens of thousands of dollars revenue for the county. In addition to that, you know, there, there's a few benefits, obviously, to the landowners. This is a consistent and substantial payment over 25 years, it's a 25-year project. When we come in and we actually construct it, you know, these are million, million-dollar-plus projects. You know, generally, it's about $10 million to build. So there would be substantial purchases within the county. And it's also a low-impact use. You know, there's, there's no car trips day-to-day. There is mowing every once in a while, but for the most part, it's quiet. It doesn't require any traffic. There's no pollution associated with it. So it's a generally low-impact project compared to something else. For example, you know, housing development going in there. Obviously, there's also some environmental benefits. This would reduce thousands of tons of emissions. We're looking at powering about 4,000 homes in the county, which is fairly substantial. And I should say surrounding counties as well. But this would be a fairly large project in terms of powering homes and businesses around here. It would also create clean energy, especially during peak summertime demand. So during the summertime, when all the AC starts cranking up, the, the project itself actually starts cranking up as well, and it can meet that demand. And then there's also the potential return to future farmland. You know, it is being farmed right now. In 25 years, we, we have essentially contracts with the landowners where we would come in and decommission it. That's part of the contract. So we would take everything out, we would recycle it, and then they can return it to whatever state it was prior to the project. And then, like I said, you know, in terms of county revenue, this would increase county revenue. The county can pass an ordinance that essentially says, for example, for every megawatt of power in this project, we would have to pay you, for example, a thousand dollars. So depending on how many megawatts this project ultimately would be, this could result in, you know, as many as $40,000 per year for the county. There's also no infrastructure or county investment needed. You know, we, we would come in, we would build the road. No lighting is needed for the project. No water is needed to be extended into the project. So there's, there's really no county investment in terms of infrastructure. And then this could also be a draw for future development. A lot of businesses these days are pledging to get clean energy. And a lot of businesses, when they come into places like Madison County, are looking for that source in the county. So, you know, if, if a company, for example, like Apple wants to come in, or Amazon wants to do some kind of warehouse or a data center, they, they would generally be looking for clean energy sources within the county. With that, that's my last page. Welcome, any questions? Happy to answer them, and if I can't answer them, you know, I'll, I'll come back later and get an answer for, for all of you.
Okay, let me, let me say that the planning commission's job is just to evaluate whatever you submit, make recommendations to the board of supervisors. And as long as whatever you submit is in accordance with the Bassington County zoning ordinance, there's not a whole lot we can do, it's in compliance. So the application would be of grave importance in this whole process. Okay?
Understood.
Okay.
I do have a question, just about what you said. Is that okay to ask?
Yes, ma'am.
You mentioned that the 4,000 homes in Madison County, I'm jumping to that, not, not anything about the building on that stuff. But we, we've seen other places where the energy doesn't stay where it's produced. It moves on north, the bigger metropolitan areas, whatever. So are you saying that this particular facility would generate power, power would go through our transmission distribution lines? It's REC now owns, most of it is telling, and our homes would benefit from this? What's, I know you're going to get that question again, so.
Sure.
What's the deal on that?
So, so we would be plugging into the REC grid? So essentially, REC would then use that in order to power everyone on that grid.
I need something with them, or you need to, we have an idea.
We, we have had initial conversations. We, we wanted to gauge whether or not they would be interested in, in a project like this. It sounds like they would be, so.
I was curious about your statements about increasing revenue. In what form would that revenue come to the county?
Yes, sir. It, it would essentially be an annual tax on the project. So it would be per megawatt of capacity in the project. I, I believe the county would have to pass an ordinance.
That's your question. What, um, on REC, do you know how much of REC's are just in general? If you don't know REC's, how much is from renewables and how much is from fossil fuels? Their overall, you know, power generation, do you have any idea?
I, I don't know exact numbers. It's, it's a relatively low percentage, but I could get back to you on that.
I'm still thinking that fossil fuels, even in the American grid, these become more popular. I still think fossil fuels count for a percentage, 80% of, but even though as popular as they are, you know, they're still relatively minor compared to, that's just from a raw perspective. Anything particular with this project, but it's kind of interesting to note that they really don't generate a lot, a lot of, from renewable sources like this.
Mr. Carr?
I have two comments to make. One is that your yogurt is solar power. I don't know if you're aware of that or not.
I saw that.
Pretty much runs that whole building with its solar panels. The other comment I would make is, I went to South Carolina on a visit, L95, went by, I know at least one solar farm, and all it looked like was just a few mirrors setting out in the fields. So I don't have any problem with it at all going in on 29. It actually might be a good thing to look at on 29.
Hi, Mr. Carr. Kind of along those lines. Have you had a chance to look at the county's ordinance concerning commercial solar power?
I have, sir.
Do you see any problems with meeting the requirements? I mean, we put, they, some people put a lot of thought and effort into that.
We, we haven't designed the project yet, so, so it's really, it's hard to say. The setbacks are relatively large compared to what we've seen elsewhere. But, but we, we would certainly look into, you know, meeting those, those requirements.
I think the, it seems to me there are two concerns right now. First of all, it's the, the excessive screening. I mean, it's, it's not prepared necessarily ugly, but the whole idea of Madison is rural and tourist are a main source of income. So having that right behind, beside our main highway corridor, so that's, that's why there are significant screenings in the ordinance. The other question I would have is, on this particular piece of land, what kind of terrain alterations would you be looking at? I mean, are you going to have to flatten a large area? Or are you going to be able to deal with this slight terrain?
So generally, I'd say we would want to do fixed tilt racking, which can handle that, that terrain. It can go up to about 30% slope. So that's well within the tolerance.
These are stationary, right? These are not the kind that follow the sun.
Yeah, the, the tracking systems essentially require much flatter ground, so it's a max of about 5% slope that we'd be looking at fixed tilt here.
Steve?
I would say that maybe this might not be the.
I, I would say that maybe this might not be the best place in the county to put it, but here's where, here's how I feel about it. It's certainly close to the transmission place where you need it to be. The worst alternative that could happen to us there was say, well, we don't want this solar farm. These people say, well, we bought this land as an investment and we wanna do something here. And they stick 25 houses there. Now we got EMS and fire and rescue and schools and everything we can do there. This way, we've generated some income for the, for the tax base of Madison County. So, you know, if you look at it as a, as a win-win, it's kind of a win-win for us. You know, I, I clearly understand what Steve said there. We want a view shed to block it off. But it's not a real bad place to put it because of the simple fact that it generates a lot of revenue for which no cost is a lot of revenues. So I think it could be a good thing to design right.
Any other questions?
Daniel, do you, you guys have any idea on the land disturbance of how much of that land you're gonna use? We, we would be looking to use as much as we could, you know, given the setbacks and everything else within that code. In terms of disturbance, you know, since it is fixed tilt, we wouldn't have to do all, all that much grading. But, you know, it, it really is determined on the plant that we ultimately. But you would maximize pretty much all the land minus setbacks? Yeah, in, in, in order to make it work, we'd probably have to maximize most of that land. And I've seen that's all set in the ground with like concrete? Yep, it's, it's essentially planted in the ground, so, so you don't need to pour concrete in there anymore. You essentially plant it eight feet in the ground and then there's decommissioning and it's removing the entire. We, we would generally decommission two, three feet below the surface. So anything below that isn't going to be impacted by farming or anything like that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just have another, I guess I guess it's gonna be a little too soon to ask, but if, you know, before, you know, before you read the card for our ordinance, before issuing stuff, especially for the other things you all have to do. PJ and all that.
Sure.
So how long do you anticipate that it's gonna take once we approve if we did? And you gotta get some, I mean, how long do you think it takes?
PGM review is.
You know, not even to factor in generating, just even to get started.
Yep, understood. PGM review is probably the longest lead time. You know, they're generally looking at about a year to review these projects and make sure, you know, any upgrades that are required, they catalog them and then we get charged for them. So it, it would be a relatively lengthy process. I would say generally, we're looking at two to three years to get these projects done.
PJM would have to approve?
For, for this one, if it's about 25 megawatts.
Pennsylvania, Jersey, Maryland authority there up in Ottabon, Pennsylvania, I think it's up there somewhere here.
Yep. It, it's the region hall.
Any other questions for Mr. Band?
Look, in my deconditioning, how far down in the ground do you go?
Uh, three feet under the ground, so, so essentially it wouldn't be impacted by any other farming or other activities.
About five feet of whatever they, you know.
That, that'll be left there. That's correct.
Well, that would all, that would all be in the application. We'd have to make a determination at that time. All that stuff is addressed in the application. So any other questions for Mr. Band?
Just to say that in our ordinance, we try to put where you end up, send it back to its natural state, which means we were warned already that frequently the land is not like, for instance, you would know how much land you would need for something such as this. This would also be a nice thing to do. But, you know, we, you talk about that, my opinion.
Along those lines, what's your structural material that you plan on using?
It's, it's steel racking.
So it'd be steel, would be cut off three feet down, but five feet.
Yes, sir.
Here again, all those issues would be, all those issues would be addressed in the application. Any other questions for Mr. Band? If not, applicants, the applicants have anything they would like to add? The applicants here, the potential applicants. Yes, sir. Would you like to add anything, Mr. Beal, right?
Yes, not really. I own it, by the way. My wife owns an equal share. Tina Weaver owns an equal share as well. It's family property, actually. Only one thing I would, I would, I would, a couple of things. Remember that if you worry about the view shed, people going down Route 29 are doing 55 miles, well, actually 70. So they don't, they're not gonna see very much for very long, only a few seconds. So I think that we can probably screen it long enough so that even that was very minimal. So of the things that I've heard about solar farms, I believe we've looked into a lot of it. Most of it comes down to view because it doesn't pollute the air, it doesn't foul the water, it doesn't harm the ground. In fact, the land itself will be more, more productive 25 years later for having land fowed for 25 years. So most of the things that people complain about or be concerned about really aren't there. The view is the only thing. And for some people like myself, I think it looks pretty good. And not because, I'm not talking about because it was my property. It would be my income, which would far improve my income front, which I think every landowner realizes that's really what you wanna do. Within a certain range, I don't wanna put things there that other people really would find very difficult to look at. But in this instance, I think it returns quite a bit to the county. And if you do the math, what we told you, over 25 years, that could be a million dollars. That's a lot of money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us tonight. We appreciate it.
And we look forward to seeing the application in a few years. Thank you.
Hope I'm still there in a few minutes.
Okay, that pretty much covers everything on the agenda except for Mr. Elliot, you were last, at the last meeting. Do you have anything you would like to share with us?
I attended the last board meeting and as we did tonight, the biggest part of the board meeting was discussion on broadband. And after broadband, they went over budget. I can tell you the planning commission's not getting a raise.
We knew that.
They pretty much discussed a lot of budget items and that's basically what the meeting was about. Everything seems to be moving around, all pretty good and they seem to be working on some numbers that hopefully it's not gonna increase tax taxes a lot. From what I gathered from the meeting.
Thank you very much. Anybody else got anything to say that's germane to the night's meeting? If not, gonna get a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor, say aye. Thank you all very much. And I again apologize for the lighting back there. I know it's pretty bright.